So it looks like we can start on time. And it looks like everyone's here right now except for trustee Decker and trustee McDonald. And trustee Newbold knew she had a conflict and couldn't be here tonight, so I know she's not going to be here. And, oh, and trustee Waite, sorry.
One, two, three.
Four. Okay.
Well, Lena's one of ours.
Yeah. One, two, three, four.
I'm at elementary.
Yeah, she is in elementary.
Oh.
We didn't have under four that.
There's seven.
Yeah, we did.
Four, we had four.
We had four, now we have five. So, having clarified that, that we've got super form. Medium super form.
Anne was in Helena today.
Oh, okay.
At the K-12 vision group.
Oh, okay.
She's on her way.
Okay, so Anne might be arriving. Okay, so we'll call the special meeting and the work session to order. So I just indicated who's here, who's probably on their way, and who is absent for sure. And the only one we're not sure about is trustee McDonald. And so now we'll take public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing no one approaching the podium, then we'll move on to the new business on the agenda, 3A1, which is to adopt elementary budgets. We'll also be talking in the next topic about high school budgets, but we'll deal with them separately. So, Pat, I know we had a preview last week, but I'm sure some numbers have changed.
Yes.
Then we have an addendum, so some numbers have changed some more.
Exactly. So what's in front of you or attached to the agenda are the numbers for adoption of the budget. The one we went over last week, other than the general fund, were the FY '19 numbers. So the, I think what is the best place to start is on page seven. And if you look at the, I'll have to match it up with the addendum. And so the, page seven to the addendum is the best place to look. This spreadsheet covers all of our budgeted funds, and it includes the levy amount, the increase/decrease in the levy, the change in mills, the total mills, and then the $200,000 home impact of the increase or decrease. And if you look at the beginning line, the general fund identifies the final budget in the elementary at $40.4 million, with the levy amount of $13.1 million and an increase of $363,000. The mills decreased by $8.30, and, or I'm sorry, by $8.3, that's not in cents. And then the tax impact is a reduction of $22.42 on that same $200,000 home. The reason for the reduction is a result of the increase in taxable values. That's the primary reason for that increase. And if you plug in this number. Okay, so if you look on page 11 of the original agenda, see if I can pop it up here.
Turn it on on the side.
Oh, you said that, didn't you?
If it doesn't go, I'll just turn it off.
Okay, so page 11, you'll see, this is a spreadsheet we've looked at, and it relates to the general fund. But if you follow down about halfway on that sheet, you'll see the taxable value and the change in taxable value. So for the elementary district, the taxable value went from $116.4 million to $129.4 million. It was a $13 million increase, or an increase of 11.25%. And so if you bounce back to page, page seven, what that means is, is the taxable value increase increases the mill value, which lowers the number of mills we have to levy to meet the obligation of the general fund budget. And so if our, if an individual's home increases by something less than this 11.25%, then their impact to their house is going to be something less than if all things stayed equal. So if the tax value of the district stayed the same this year compared to last year, then the increase of $363,581 would be a cost of about $8 to a $200,000 home per year. So that's the annual cost, is about eight bucks. If the increase in the home is the same as the tax value increase for the whole elementary district of 11.25%, it's still going to be that exact same amount, $8.43. Yeah.
Just to clarify my question, we talked about homes, but in fact, all of the commercial properties get picked up in both districts, right?
That's correct.
The downtown commercial properties?
Yes.
So in fact, they're carrying more of the burden and the homes less, essentially?
That would be my guess. That's correct. And I, and that's why I wanted to go through this little exercise, is because if your increase in your property is even at 8%, you're going to see a reduction. And, and the reason is, is the 11.25% increase all, overall, from a tax value standpoint, likely has much larger increases in tax value. So, so you have both the 11.25% as the total increase, but you're also going to have some going up more and some going up less.
And when you talk about taxable value of the district, we're also talking about the tax base. So it's not just a closed, a finite amount going up in value. It's the tax base plus new businesses, houses.
Exactly.
So we have more taxpayers spreading out the burden a little bit more, which also helps. It's not just the value, but it's the actual tax base, too.
Exactly. So, so the, and the reason I'm going over this is because you have the reference to the tax impact on a $200,000 home, and it generates lots of interest. And to Mike's point, if, if everyone's property stayed exactly the same as the prior year, so as this, this $116.4 million was the tax base, and a new development represented the $13 million increase in tax value, then the $22 would be a savings across the board on those, those homes. And it's not really, there's no real easy way without looking at individual tax values to say the impact. What you can say is, a $200,000 home last year compared to this year, it's $22 less. And if, if your value of your home went up at the same rate, which it's not likely for a home, because I agree with Diane, then it's still going to be that $8.40 a year increase in tax. And if it's less, and even, you know, when I ran the numbers at 8%, you're going to experience a reduction. It's going to go down if your value is at the 8% increase. And, and the reason is, is the other increases in value are picking up more of that tax obligation. So sort of a long exercise, but I know that in looking at page seven, when you see a levy increase and then a decrease in tax, it doesn't compute. And so if, for the general fund, that's why I ran the numbers, just presuming exactly same taxable values, and the cost is $8.43. If we compared 18 to 19, the tax values did stay the same, and that, that cost went down by $7.46. So we have an 18 to 19 reduction of $7.46, a 19 to 20 increase of $8.43. And part of that change is, tax values stayed the same, there's actually a levy decrease from 18 to 19. So this is, you know, I recognize this as a, sort of a limited scope of documents you're looking at, but I wanted to give you context. And, and so it's probably also looking at this sheet, a good time to look at the, the reason for the amendment to the agenda. So on the elementary side, we had one, one change. And the change was in the transportation fund. And the transportation fund is originally reflected on the agenda that went out, identified a original levy of $451,377. It's reduced on the addendum by $77,166. And I know we're not talking about high school now, but I'll reference that the transportation levy in the high school went down by $39,834. The total of those two reductions is $117,000. The reason for the reduction is that when we negotiated with Beach for the, for covering the cost of the retrofit of the buses with seat belts, they agreed that we paid that cost of $351,000 over three years, with the intent of lessening the tax burden and spreading it over three years. With the MRA decision to provide a TIF remittance, I talked to Beach, and they are agreeable to, to making that payment in one year, next year. And so what we had contemplated for a levy is that $117,000 to cover that obligation to Beach for the seatbelt retrofits. If we move that obligation to next year, when we can utilize the TIF remittance, we can't utilize it this year. That's the big deal with the statute, is that a TIF remittance we receive this year can't be used until the following year. So we want to take advantage of that TIF remittance, and are recommending to the board that we reduce the levy by this $117,000, the $77,166 in the elementary, in order to cover that cost all next year. And the impact would be that the TIF remittance would, would pick up that, that obligation. And that's something we had worked on between now and, and probably at the end of the year, first part of next year. Mostly because the city hasn't figured out where the, what URDs are supporting the TIF remittance, and there's some work left to do. But it was really our belief that if we know that that's coming, and we know the seatbelt retrofits are a one-time burden, let's see if we can pay for it without a levy, but instead with the TIF remittance. So the page seven, elementary final budget change was a reduction in a levy on the transportation fund budget to that 374 to 11 number you see there. The tuition fund, this, this represents an increase in the permissive levy to assist with excess special ed costs. That's part of our projections that we did look at last week. The levy amount is $144 to $32. And then you'll see the debt service going down $91,000, and compared to the prior year, so we're levying less. Part of the reason for the lower levy is we did put TIF remittance from the prior year in the debt service fund, so that's helping lower that tax burden. So that'll go down for next year, or for this year. And then the building reserve increase relates to the, the permissive levy within the building reserve. And that's, it's less than what we anticipated, because this year the state is picking up a portion. So this increase is, is less than what we were previously estimating because of the state kick-in, which, which we were hoping would happen and did happen this year. So overall, between these budgeted funds, we have an overall reduction of 14.36 mills. And that creates a total mills, millage of 201, and then a total reduction on a $200,000 home of $38.77 as compared to the prior, prior year. Lot of info on that sheet before I jump to another sheet. Any questions?
I had a question on the, on the transport, I mean, sorry, on the building reserve funds. We've got this, this levy increase/decrease, this is a permissive levy, because we don't have our, the ones that sunset the, the building reserve fund, or levies that we used to have.
Correct.
We didn't replace those back in 15, or whatever year that they, they set. And we talked about the bond, taking care of that. So this, is this the same fund that those two previous ones went into? And, and does this represent a sufficient investment for kind of the future? And, and my point being, I brought this up last year and the year before, when they sunset, I do realize that, you know, if we're not replacing them, we're not investing, putting away for those roofs, those boilers, those, you know, anything that, that may be the windows, the air conditioning. And I know we've got new systems now, but that we're always going to need that. And I don't want to have to wait another 25 years and do this all over again. I will, I promise you, I will not be on the board then. But I don't want whoever follows us to have to do that. So my question is, can we talk a little bit about the building reserve fund? And are there plans to replace those? If there aren't, can we talk about it maybe next year? Because it's probably too late to add anything this year, I know, but, but I really want to, don't want that conversation to fall by the wayside.
No, thank you. And so this levy, and you're right, is not the voted levy that, that we, that we would typically see or had seen in both budgets, and that, that did expire. So both the elementary and high school budget are voted levies expired. The permissive levy was allowed here, I want to say, three legislative sessions ago. And what it allows school districts to do is to meet priority expenditure obligations. And this relates back to the conversation we had with, with Burley about some of the priority facility expenditures, and then the part of the funding to remodel and reinvest in the buildings behind us. Those, these levies come before the board in, in March on a, on a estimate basis. So we're estimating these permissive levies, changes in the permissive levies with specific projects identified. So these, the permissive levy here wouldn't meet what you're talking about, because what we'll be looking at is Burley's priority list when we talk about these permissive levies in the future. What will be lacking from here will be general floor maintenance, general roof maintenance, some of the items that Burley had talked about when we, when we boosted, or when the board approved an allocation of those carry-forward building reserve dollars to cover those, those costs, electrical, plumbing, roofing, HVAC.
Equipment, chill doors, one more.
Right. So I, I think that, that this would be a conversation we'd like to have going forward is just the ongoing maintenance obligation, the ongoing obligations in the form of a voted levy that would meet those types of needs.
And, and the reason I bring it up is because I think it would be more palatable and, and a more fiscally responsible to start with a, with a small amount and start putting it away, as opposed to waiting until we have a disaster and have to ask for a big chunk and increase people's taxes by a great amount.
Right.
So I appreciate the answer, and I think if we could put that on your radar for next year.
It's squarely there, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
If I can ask a question, then, as I understand the intricacies of school funding as best I can, and what is allowable with TIF funds, it would be in, it would be in indirect savings, because TIF funds can't go directly to transportation, but they could be used to free up money that then could be used for transportation. So the net gain is that, that's what's going to happen, but it's, it's a little more intricate than that. So I just want to make sure everyone.
That's a great clarification, yeah. The statute, in addition to stating that, yeah, the TIF remittances can only be used for a reduction in taxes or billing up reserves in the following year, it also identifies the specific funds that can be deposited to, and the transportation fund is not one of those funds. So, so you're totally right. We would devise a plan that would allow the funds to offset costs in one fund that would then cover the obligation to Beach next year. That's right. And that would be something we'd obviously present to the board, and, yeah.
We have the term permissive levy. What keeps us from just going nuts on that?
So it's, it's maxed out. The, the cap on the permissive levy in the building reserve is $15,000 plus $100 per A and B. And the initial permissive levy here was to cap, to the, to the cap, but it's not because of the state picking up part of the obligation. So I bet the state's picking up, and sorry, I don't have that in front of me, about $40,000 or better, yeah. So if I can, I'd move on then to page 10, that's in the original agenda, and it identifies the projections. And I know you have, have seen these, so I only want to point out one or two modifications here on the elementary side. So page 10, the left column that's blocked there is the elementary side, and it reflects, if you'll look down, under anticipated obligation, a reduction in Title IV coverage of safety and support officer, $23,000, and a boost to the teaching and learning budget of that same amount. The Title IV budget came into play last year, and it's federal funds that we hadn't had prior to that. It's limited in the, in the type of expenditures we can, we can use, and we need a little boost to teaching and learning to support the curriculum adoption, in particular, the math adoption. So this, this will help with that. Then under reduction savings and offsets, you'll see the, the permissive levy in the tuition fund. The actual levy, as you saw before, is $144,000, because we had some carry-forward to use. And then the work comp credit of $110,000 on the elementary side balances our, our budget or brings it to zero. That was really the only item to add on that page, unless there's any questions.
Any questions so far? Okay.
Page 11, you've seen this, I won't, there's only one point I wanted to make here. From 18 to 19, even though we voted some increases in levies, we still had a reduction in our overall levy in both districts. And the reason was an increase in GTB, the guaranteed tax base aid. You'll see on the elementary, there was a small increase, $131,963. The reason that it's less is that our tax values went up. And, and so the subsidy is intended to reflect a comparison of our tax values to this state-calculated sort of value, tax value. And if you're, if you're a higher tax value district, then you're going to receive less of this funding from the state. And I think before I've given the example that Whitefish receives no GTB at all, given their tax valuation. We do, which is, is reflected there, about $7.7 million. I'm just pointing out that it, it, in comparison to what we saw in the last couple of years, it's, it's not as significant of an increase, and it's, it's related to our tax value increasing. That was the only comment I was going to make there. The amendment or the modified agenda, page eight, I just think this is interesting when you look at the mill levies excluding debt service on a graph. The elementary is pretty flat, and when we get to the high school, although you, you have a view of it down below, it's very flat and is even less than it was in '05. Lot of factors go into play, and I've listed those down below, sort of the whys. Changes in school funding formula, change in enrollment, TIF remittance, change in state support, increase in retirement rates, increase in transportation rates and routes, approval of additional levies, and expiring levies. And so it's just interesting, and I think it's good to track those mills. The page nine, if you look at that page, the, this is focused on the debt service, and I always point this out on the elementary, but very, very little debt in the elementary district. It was zero from 2011 through 2016, which is pretty amazing, and then quite low prior to then. But of course, we have that, that big arcing mill increase there with a, a drop this year, which is, which as I said, is related to TIF remittance, so that, that might be a short-term basis.
I just, real quick, and this, obviously, just so people following along at home understand, this is our bond.
That's our bond.
So our, this is, the debt service on the bond, and it's a 20-year bond, so that's, after 20 years, that's expected, or less, hopefully less and probably less, that will be back down to zero barring any other major.
Increases or changes, that's correct.
Thanks.
Yep, that's correct.
Any other questions?
The only other attachment I was going to reference is actually up there, sorry, Hatton, I appreciate you flipping through there. It is right there. And this is not included in your, in your agenda. Hopefully you can see that okay, but it's a three-year look, and what's, what's interesting is, I think, looking at the, the change in taxable value and the change in, in total levies. And, and we're at 34.5%, if I'm seeing that correctly, 32.5%. We are at 34.5% in 2018 of total local levies compared to the total budget. So locally, that's the, the support of the general fund budget. And it's, it's about right in the same percentage as it was last year, and less than it was in, in 2018. So as I mentioned before, if you go from 18 to 19, there is true tax savings of about $7.50 per $200,000 home. And then from 19 to 20, it, it went up by $8.43. I mean, the net is about 70 cents if you look over the, the, those three years, all things being equal, when you look at taxable values. But this kind of just breaks it down under the funding formula, where how much is base levy support and how much is over-base levy support.
I guess what this tells us is, even if we dropped our budget down to the lowest allowed by law, which is base, right? There would still be a local levy? Because I always had in my head that there, that there would be no local levy if we did that.
There would still be a local levy, that's correct. And it's, the school funding formula compels districts to adopt budgets at least at that base level based upon their A and B. And it's part of the, the lawsuits that, that happened in the, well, going back to the early 2000s and, and before then, that provided for state funding and local funding to get to that base funding level. So that's, that's correct. And what's that?
The state won't take us up to base. We have to have a levy.
That's correct, yep.
Those, that number around a third, then, of our budget basically is raised locally. Is that about normal for, like, communities that are similar in size across the state? Like, do we have any idea how we compare with that?
It'd be interesting to compare, and I could, I could pull that together. My, you know, I think, I think it would vary. I really do. And I think the, I think most districts, larger districts are at max budget, and so most are, are levying the over-base. The wild card is guaranteed tax base. And so Whitefish is going to be higher. So the, the way the base budget works really is it, it spits out the amount of the base levy, and it backs into it by looking at how much GTB is provided for your district. And then it, and then what remains in the funding formula to calculate the base is, is the base levy. So the, the variance in GTB around the state will, will dictate to a big extent, or large extent, that percentage.
And that's based on property values in the area, basically?
Exactly.
So, like, I mean, to just put it really bluntly, like, wealthier areas are going to have, you know, that's, that's. to have, you know, that's more, and so Whitefish is going to have less support from the state because their local tax base can support more. Is that the idea?
That's exactly right. That's the idea. And it's sort of, it's a pot, and it gets divvied up based upon your tax valuation relative to the state calculation of this state value, which is, the formula has been increasing, which has been helping districts increase their base budget without a significant increase in local base levies. And that's really, you know, if you look at our base from 18 to 19, it went from 5.4 million to 4.8 million. It went down significantly. And so our base levy, even in 2020, is still less than it was in 2018. So we're taxing a, if you look at the bottom, the total levies, in 2018, it was 13.1 million on a budget of 36.9 million, and in 2020, it's 13.167. It's only 50,000 more on a 40.4 million budget. So the budget has increased significantly with not much change in the total levies, and that's why, from 2018, that's why the percentage went down from 34.5 to 32.5. A lot of that is GTB that we received.
Any other questions?
The last sheet is page four, which is the summary of the adoption motion. It reflects our final budgets and our levy amounts. It's a recap of that first spreadsheet that we went through.
And that's in the addendum?
It's in the addendum, yeah, thank you.
Sorry? There is no, yes, I was. Okay. I am just curious about this, what we're talking about so far is mostly our sources of revenue or income, sort of how we're building our budget. And we're not really talking about how we are portioning the budget or what decisions we're making about what we're spending on. So just have a question about when we adopt the general fund is really where there's the most kind of, most things included in the general fund. And so I'm curious about whether, when we adopt a budget like this, how much of that general fund, I can see some line items here, obviously, as far as staff, and we know that staff is the hugest part of any school's budget if you're doing it right. But I'm wondering how much of the general fund is already kind of locked in at the start of our year like this?
So one thing I would say, there's lots of things within the budget that are required. One thing I think that this district has made a commitment to is to meet accreditation standards whenever possible. And so, you know, that's class sizes, which dictates number of teachers, staff, even down to the number of librarians, for example, are dictated in accreditation standards. So that takes up a huge chunk of your general fund, is when we make a commitment to meet accreditation standards. There are districts in the state that have foregone accreditation standards because they get into budget, you know, crunch. And so that's something to consider, that I think, I feel powerful saying that we do make a commitment to meet accreditation standards, which does restrict your budget. It leaves less discretionary funds when you make that commitment. So I'll just mention that.
What I was going to mention is just that the page 10 is not the detail of the budget. What it shows is carrying forward from last year, the increases. And so the increase in expenditures and the increase in budget. And here's how we're proposing to expand that increase. And as you mentioned, it's largely staff, and it's both new staff and it's increases in staff salaries. The proportion of general fund budget for staff and staff-related expenditures is about 90%. And so the, when we, when we look at our FY18 or FY19 sort of recap, hopefully in September, we'll have a more detailed spreadsheet that'll delineate the various components of the budget. And so it'll take salaries and benefits, go into a little more detail, where those expenditures are at in total. And then it'll have the various discretionary expenditures also in total. I think that pie chart we looked at is also a place that delineates among salaries and benefits where it goes, and then among discretionary or fixed costs where the funds go. And, you know, I anticipate breaking down a number of those categories, and really as much as the board would like to see in terms of breaking those categories down to see what it looks like and to be comfortable with the expenditures that exist there.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then we're moving on to the recommendation from the administration is that the trustees approve the adoption of the 2019-2020 elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented in the attached motion and resolution E. And so the attached, we're talking about in the addendum?
Addendum, yeah.
Okay. So is everyone clear on that? We're looking at page, what's been, replace page four?
Page four of the addendum, yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the elementary budgeted funds? By trustee Smith, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any discussion or discussion? I'll just say thanks again to the business office and Pad and your staff for.
Thank you.
It's a very complicated process, so we thank you for your attention to detail and your ability to try to communicate with us, you know, what it takes to balance our budget. So thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve the adoption of all 2019-2020 elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented on the attached motion and resolution 2020-2E. Please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees present. And then we move on to two, which is to adopt the 2019-2020 high school budgets. And so, Pat, although it's a related but somewhat separate animal, I don't know if there's things to highlight that point out some distinctions in this budget.
Thank you. Probably fewer, but I'd start again on page 15 of the amended agenda item. And like the elementary side, let's list our budgeted funds, the proposed amount to be raised by levies. The transportation fund, as in the elementary, that proposed levy decreased here in the high school by 39,834, and that would represent the high school's portion of the $117,000 retrofit for seat belts, that obligation to beach. And the good news here is then that that levy is reduced in light of the proposed TIF remittance. The other change on the high school is way more subtle. It's the billing reserve final budget, and it was 2,315,188, and it reduced by $423 to 2,314,765. This is more a factor of how precise Dan Parrish is. And so when we made that transportation fund change, he asked if we could make this one as well, and it reflects an accrual, and it's just being a little more, a lot more accurate in that budget. I think, similar to what we talked about in the elementary side, you'll see the tax reduction. And then if you, if you look on page 11 of the original agenda, we're showing the, at the bottom, the change in tax value. The tax value went up by $22 million in the high school district. That's 10.67%. And really, if a home increases by that same percentage, then the amount of the increase in the general fund budget would be the same as if the tax values had stayed exactly the same. And if it goes up by something less, then it'll be less than that amount. I didn't do the calculations on the high school, but the same concepts would apply.
And just to clarify, our high school taxing, what do you call it?
Districts.
Base. Is all of them, Zulu County, except Frenchtown?
Right.
And it's, and the elementary is a subset of the high school, right? So it includes the elementary plus the rest of the county except Frenchtown?
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right. And it goes up as far as Sealy on the high school side. Yeah, that's right, including that Salmon Prairie area. The page 11, the GTB change, you'll see it actually went down slightly on the high school side, given that larger tax base, that's reasonable, and in light of the increase in the tax value. The page 10 of the original agenda identifies the increase in the high school budget and in the expenditures. This, the high school side really hasn't changed. So the, it's, really in comparison to years past, is, looks very good in terms of being able to balance our budget, and there's a minimal increase in the permissive levy, minimal changes in the non-staff-related increases, and it's balanced. I think most people here remembered when there was an inter-local agreement that would be available to support the high school, and so they're, it's kind of on its own two feet right now. So the other item that I was wanting to identify on the high school side is if we go back to, or go to those graphs, on page eight of the attachment to the addendum, you'll see the high school mill levy excluding the debt service very flat over that period of time, over those 15 years, in terms of total mills. And then on page nine, the high school debt service mill levies, like the elementary, there's a reduction. That reduction was linked to some, partly linked to some TIF remittance that we had in the debt service fund, which helped. And just looking forward, next year, we have refunded bonds that'll go off, and so that's 750,000 a year. And then the year after that, the second batch of refunded bonds will also go off, which is another 750,000. So we're looking at 1.5 million dollar reduction in debt service obligation on the high school side because those refunded bonds are now being retired. Sort of the Mike's point, they, I think a number of you were here when we refunded those bonds with really good interest rates and had better principal payments. And so we got those knocked out. And so we'll realize on our budgets next year some lower levy obligations on the debt You know, I, page 15 of the attachment to the addendum has the summary, and you'll see that the total levy increase was $450,000, which last year, there was a decrease, but that's pretty low when you look at the overall budgets there. The mills went down 8.81, and the total mills 92, went, are 92.25, and the $200,000 home tax is reduced compared to the prior year, 23.78. And I think the only other item that I was going to maybe mention is, and it's not in your pack, it was that same spreadsheet that we looked at on the elementary that showed the percentage comparison. And the high school, the local levies on the general fund are 34.6%, so it's a little higher than the elementary, but compared to 2018, we're at 36.4%. And then, interestingly, 2018, the total levies were 10.7 million, and in 2020, they're 10.5 million, so it's actually still less by $200,000, even though our total budgets went up a little over a million dollars over that two-year time span. So what that means is the local taxpayer's support of the budgets are less than what they were in 2018. And a big factor is that GTB payment in 2019.
Trustee Smith?
Just a quick clarification, Pat, on this. When we look at our page 15, we're looking at the $200,000 home increase or decrease, is that monthly or annual? And then relative to the, because up there is annual, this is annual too, right?
Exactly. So that's the annual, if a $200,000 home in 2020, as compared to 2019, would see an annual decrease of 23.78.
Because when we, when we do those, if we have it on a ballot, isn't that monthly? Do we see it on ballot?
It's annual.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's just different. Sorry, thanks.
Any other questions? Anything else to point out about the high school side? Okay. Well, the recommendation is that the trustees approve adoption of all 2019-2020 high school budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented on the attached motion and resolution 2020-2S. And once again, we're talking about page 15 of the addendum for high school final budgets?
Yes.
Okay. Is everyone's spread with that? Okay. Is there?
Page 12.
12. Oh, right, okay, page 12, thanks.
And then the actual resolution would be on page 13.
Right. Okay. And so is there a motion to approve adoption of the high school side, moved by trustee Service, and seconded by trustee Wake and trustee Decker? So is there any board discussion? Again, other than to thank your office, and in particular, to thank you for realizing with short notice that information about TIF impacted the budget in a positive way. So thank you for working that out, you know, since our meeting last week. I really appreciate the work that all of you've done.
Thank you, and giant kudos to Lenora and to Kara, who hugged around with us to get that stuff out on short notice, so I appreciate their efforts.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the adoption of all 2019-2020 high school budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by the tax levies as presented on the attached motion and resolution 2020-2S. Please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees.